All right, everyone, I am going to draw the meeting order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. United States of America, we do we follow? One nation, under God. Welcome, everyone. I need to do something first before we get going here, and that is a motion to allow trustee O'Reilly and trustee Jamil to attend electronic.
So move trustee O'Reilly now.
But that's still, we can let her in when she's back.
So move.
So moved by trustee Barowski, seconded by?
Second.
By trustee Tanucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right. Second item on the agenda, Bobby to come back in. Bobby, you are allowed to participate. The board gave you, you're still sideways, so thank you. I have no idea why that's going on, but it is kind of comical. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the homeowners associations. Is there anyone from Willowbrooks, I'm sorry, Willowbrook Woods here, like a Mark Challenger? In the room? Anyone from Royal Melbourne here? Okay. Next item is public comment. I will let everyone know that there was a comment received online or via email, and it was distributed to the board prior to the start of the meeting. With that, I will open it up to public comment. Yes, Benjamin?
My name is Benjamin Matthews. I'm from 4369 Oakley Range, from the Oakley Home Owners Association. My question is, does the manager department or the village attorney have any update of this about 4369, Oakley 22, others with their application, or in general, has been any other further meetings with them? Thank you.
Yeah, we have not had any additional communication with them.
Okay. Well, Chris is next, yeah?
Yeah, Chris Meyer, back again.
Yes.
As you know, two meetings ago, I thanked Jeff and Dana for following up with the farm at it, and everything was cut down. That's great. But wattle is invasive, buckthorn is invasive. And if you cut it, you've got to dig it out. And already the wattle is up to my waist, buckthorn is coming back. They had never put in the drain tile they talked about. They were going to cut the top of the berm around Memorial Day. That never happened until after the Fourth of July or just before the Fourth of July. So the problem is ongoing maintenance, the trees which grew spontaneously, which they, the lives keep on ornamental care, which I talked to my daughter, who has her degree in horticulture, ornamental care is an invasive species. And it's growing all over the place. But the buckthorn coming back, the wattle, has to be, it has to be dug out. And the problem is ongoing maintenance. I mean, if they keep it cut, yeah, it's not going to grow, but it's not going to stop it from growing. And also, I know there's probably a PUD on the land itself, but if the land, and it's nothing.
Speaker's move, so that we could hear.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a way, Chris, if you could come up a little closer or move the microphone. Maybe you can move the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
I know there's a PUD on the land. I don't know when it expires, if it expires. But if the land is ever sold, and someone comes back before this board to build homes or whatever back there, is there any way we can put covenant, or the village can put a covenant to have the berm removed? That's, so it's the ongoing maintenance, the drain tile, and the berm.
So who's going to address the ad hoc meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris, for his head discussions earlier this week.
So I suppose, you know, that was the topic of my meeting with village staff yesterday. And I reached out to Tom, who is with Bus Landscaping, caretaker, if you will, of the landscaping over at Abbott. Didn't reach him today, and I'm going to schedule a meeting because, you know, we hadn't heard anything or seen it for a couple of months. So if you want to go out there and do that, I have, he's not going to be on the property this week, but he will be probably next week, and he's going to call me so we can arrange a visit to get in there. But I'm glad you brought forward these comments, because, you know, that's information that we hadn't been aware of.
Did they give you any indication about the drain tile?
So I know the drain tile was, you know, discussed as a potential improvement. They, last time I was out there, they re-rated this.
Or whatever it was.
Yeah, I know that was discussed early on as a possible solution. But last time I was out there, they reestablished the drainage swale and didn't eat the French drain because there was a lot of relief from one side to the other. But if your comments on growth on that and things like that, you know, be interested to see what the condition of that is.
But they did replace their fence, which was good.
Okay, that's good.
The berm was there. Was it ever approved?
No.
Okay, interesting. Bobby's having a hard time hearing people, so I'm not sure. Hey, Bobby, are you able to hear people around the board table or just everyone in general?
Moving it made a big difference, but Jeff needs to speak up.
Jeff, you've got to speak up.
Speak up.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Bobby, for that. So there was a second ques- did I answer the first? Yeah, but.
Yeah, so the PUD part of it, Vic, if I?
I was going to say, I was going to defer to Vic on the PUD. I think it's no longer in existence, right?
Well, I believe that there was an original PUD. I have not looked to see what the status of it is. My guess is that although some of the improvements have been installed, I don't know that all of them have been, and there may be laps as a result of that. But the property has been subdivided, and so there is the ability for those lots to be sold as buildable lots.
Okay, so the answer is we don't know to that question, right?
So is it a possibility?
It's always a possibility, yeah. So, keep it under advisement.
So if the berm is not approved, maybe we can have them remove the berm. We've had this issue elsewhere.
Um, well, there was, uh, there was a whole.
Talked about the berm was actually creating a drainage that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, the berm actually helps with the drainage to the Vernon Hills properties, if you will, because that whole farm field slopes that way, and then you've got the berm that keeps everything on one side of the berm on that side. So the drainage that they're getting is from the top of the berm and on quote-unquote their side. So that's what's running over there. But Bus Landscaping reestablished that drainage swale, so it wouldn't go there. That's what, that's.
I don't see much of a swale.
So I know, I know it was there the last time I was there, so I'll be out there in the next week, weekend, to take a look at it.
If the property gets developed, all that can be looked at, so, yeah.
Because everybody who bought the property would be identified with it.
Well, I guess, depending on the type of development, right, I guess that's a good question. Yeah, Vic, let me answer that.
I don't have enough history to.
Yeah, we'll have to get back in it.
To solid answer.
Thank you for the comment. Helen, you were next.
Thank you. Same issue that I brought up last time. I understand that this is being looked into, but the issue is the complete lack of transparency in terms of the materials that are to be used for the trustee meeting. We used to be able to have access to them. Now, I did get some of them tonight, only because I asked, but I'm a single person. Everybody else here probably went through the website and saw absolutely nothing. Other villages around us provide material. I went to a Zirks website. They had over 400 pages of material that were added to their packets, and they call it packet. Hill Bear, smaller village, more our size, 99 pages of material included, including financial information. And I'm not asking for financial information, although other villages give it, because what you pay to somebody is something that most residents, many residents, might want to know. But I'm just here to say, it's time to go back to our transparency that we used to have and communicate this information as to what is going on at a trustee meeting. Because otherwise, to be honest, it looks like you're trying to hide the ball. And I don't like that, and I don't think other people do either.
Chris, I'm going to, you responded to that. We have no issues providing information, so.
Yeah, I responded to Helen's email request earlier. We are looking at bringing a policy in place and seeing what we can publish, what we can't. We can't do what we did before because we were posting things that we shouldn't have been posting. Many towns do things differently. The towns she identified do post the full packets. I looked at them. They had things that shouldn't have been in there. Many towns don't. I looked at about 25 today, and two-thirds do what we're doing now, and the other third posts.
At some later time, could you help me understand what it is that we should or shouldn't be posting? Because I very much do agree, we should be posting things like our budget and where we are against it.
Yeah. Well, it was, somebody's applying for a liquor license, and the whole liquor license was out there.
There was a lot of private information that would not be available under any FOIA. There's express exemptions for that.
That makes total sense.
And.
Yeah, yeah, there's some, there's.
Those make total sense.
There's a whole bunch of stuff like that that was like, ooh, jeez, it just ended up out there, like.
Yeah, no, those make total sense to me, but, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why they pulled it back.
But going for a plus, a new plus, neighbors and everybody else have a right to know that information.
Yeah, you already have the information. In fact, the information the board's getting is the first time they've seen it. So you've already had it. You're ahead of the board. So anyways, there you have it. But we've asked, we've asked them to do it, so, in fairness.
I'm laying out.
Well, the next meeting, I would like to see something if we could.
Can we do that by the next meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, other comment?
Will you be doing rules for staff who put the agenda together on what can and cannot be disclosed? I mean, does everybody have a clear understanding of what can and can't be done?
Uh, no, it will require attorney time to review each agenda packet to make sure we have.
Is it determined, or is there not a?
Well, I don't, I don't want to see us reinvent the wheel, but I'd like to see us have a template of normal things that come and go through, through the village, and those things that can't.
Yeah.
I think that Chris and I can try to develop some basic guidelines on what's in the public packet and what is not. But there are clearly things that are matters for the board that shouldn't ordinarily be available to the public.
That's totally, I would think so. We shouldn't have to pay, sorry, you, but.
No, I don't want to look at it, trust me.
There's the guiding philosophy, and I imagine that there's probably be considered black and white and gray, and so.
Yes, we have all of those colors.
I would say. But what, but at least, you know, these are what needs to go through your, your busy schedule.
I'm assuming we can get this resolved, so, yes. So thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else have public comment?
I have a question. There's a scout here.
Yeah, he's raising his hand. Yeah.
So, recently, there's been a crime up in the area. What have you guys been doing to prevent it, and what can, do about it?
Well, yeah, describe the crime, yeah. Well, I mean, a couple of things. I mean, so first off, some kids vandalized the barn over here, right? And so we reacted to that by putting some security cameras up, ordered some things up, made sure the door, the door was unlocked, made sure the door was secure. So that's in place now, and obviously the sheriff is watching for it, but fortunately a lot of damage happened to the barn and schoolhouse, which will have to be repaired. Regarding other crime, crime is actually, you know, comparatively down, and we've been, I didn't want to talk about this, we've been fortunate that we had a, some break-ins last year. We haven't had any for a while, and so we've been actually pretty fortunate that the crime has been down. You know, we try to warn people not to leave their cars unlocked. I think it was Libertyville that had that the other day, where they left their cars unlocked, and some people came, we believe from the city, came in, and in the middle of the night, just started going in and, you know, starting cars up. The keys were right in there. So we've been, you know, trying to use communications to remind people of some of those things to do to protect yourselves, and, you know, a variety of other things. But fortunately, we live in a community that's been fairly safe, and crime's been really low.
I have a, to answer your question, on what can someone your age do? I think there's a couple things to the present day, like, you know, helping to remind your family and others that you care about, things that can be locked, you know, not scared, but just safe. And also, you know, if that's the nature that you have that that's on, I know how people understand that it's not just being afraid of getting caught, but being proud of seeing things now. That'd be my thought.
If you know, we did it. If you could tell us, that'd be really appreciated, too. You could talk to me afterwards, huh?
See something, say something.
There you go.
Well, there's that. Couple of comments, if I can. Younger generation can help the older generation with technology. And the reason I say that is so many of us now have key fobs, or like, you know, remote start functions that are key fobs. Many people will just hang it on the garage door, on the backside of the garage door, in their laundry room, when they walk in. That is not far enough away from a car for criminals who wants to walk in and press the start button. So educate people who don't know, they need to separate those things. You know, you just can't hang it up in your garage wall and say, my car's safe. Or like, on the backside of the door, it's not. You've got to separate the key fob from the car. So we saw a little bit of that kind of case, when people would just hang the key fob up, and the group coming through the neighborhood who were supposed to be on cars, basically just walked in, pressed the button, and killed the cars. And of course, they died when they got to wherever they're going, you know, once they turned off, they couldn't restart it. So help educate the older, the older community about the technology and vehicles. A lot of these cars have automatic trackers in them now. I know my app does, but not everybody knows, because there's an app available that can track some of the retired tech cars. So if you can help with the technology, I think that would be kind of cool. We do have two officers that patrol Long Grove full-time, two shifts a day, morning shift and afternoon shift. And they do a pretty good job of patrolling and taking care of the police work here in the area. We did have some, an incident maybe two years ago, where we had some people who were discharging firearms illegally within the village in an open field. Naturally, one of the people eventually went into some toughs. So the police department did a great job of setting up, I mean, the technology. They did a remote thing where they set up cameras in the woods. And it wasn't just like a deer camera where they can picture somebody. It was a real-time camera. So if the cameras picked up, it wasn't moving at all, it would send dispatch immediately to Long Grove vehicle. So there's a lot of , and we've got drones in the area.
Sure.
When we got those kind of alerts, so that we could see where those vehicles are moving in and out of the area. So there's a lot of technology that we're using, and Lake County Sheriff has actually deployed in Long Grove, in the upper areas of Lake County businesses. I don't know if that helps add a little bit of color to your question or not.
Can you just kind of go on opposite of the crime you were talking about? There was a crime in my neighborhood about three or so months ago, and there were seven police cars there, and they had, reaching the house, I'm pretty sure, and probably one of them ended up just kicking into the farm to go back. I don't know if any of you guys know what happened there, or you guys do, could you?
I, if you gave us some address, we could look it up, or can you give us some details? We could look it up, Chris.
2812 North Court.
Okay, we're not going to look it up. I don't know.
Yeah, it was strange. There were like, definitely cars, they were watching out the street and the path. What are you doing? Jumping your hands, and then there were like, some other police were yelling at the house, come out, your hands up.
Oh, really?
So that's dramatic.
Yeah, well, we'll have to look it up. So there was an incident, so I don't remember what it was.
Where is this in your citizenship badge? Yeah, have you heard any of the three yet?
Yes.
So this is the last one. Thank you for coming.
Hey, Chris, I just want to know, you know, who are those old people that they're going to educate?
I think it's young people.
Oh, okay. Anyway, just thought I'd ask that question. Anyways, one other thing, though. So the only other thing, speaking of younger people and technology, just don't put it on your Facebook page that you're going to be on vacation.
Oh, good one, yeah.
Stuff like that, right?
The house watch, too, right?
Yeah, we have a house watch, too. So if you are going to be on vacation, there you go, use the house watch.
You know, Bill, this sounds like a great newsletter article.
I love it, Bobby. There you go.
The common sense rules we should live by.
Yep.
Both you can use.
So, okay, any other comments, public comment?
I just want to say, I see we're a victim of a car stolen drone in front of our house like seven years ago, so I always feel like I pass the camera out, and I think we have our neighbors just communicating it to me. So that's people are vigilant, like, around this time.
Thank you for that, too.
Or just to know, make sure you know your neighbors.
Yeah. Talk to your neighbor.
Okay, so we did, we did not have a public safety report tonight, but we actually did. So we're going to, we're going to skip that item, because it sort of happened, and there's no sheriff or fire department. We have the consent agenda, and there are three items on it. Approval of July 2024 bill warrants, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the July 23rd, 24th meeting, subject to non-sustanzive provisions, and then approval of executive session meeting minutes from the same date. There was a couple of minor things in the minutes that got partially corrected, so they were posted. One was, it was written a little bit differently, but in fact, under my message, I informed the board that we are scheduling an HOA president's meeting. And the way it was written, it said I asked the board, schedule the meeting. So that was not what I was doing. And then, secondly, a resident came in here informing us that there were horses on the property behind him, and the address, his address ended up being the address where the horses were, and that was not correct. So the minutes are being changed to say that the resident at 6856, Alice reported that a neighbor had horses on their property. And then the next item down there also talks, corrects the address that the property at 6856 is where the horses were. So those are the minor modifications. It's just a technical thing. It was wrong. And I went to look, and I did see the horses there over the weekend. That's why I know the addresses, so.
How many?
It looked like, well, I only saw four, but, yeah, six, okay.
They nice?
They look like nice horses, but they're not supposed to be there. So those are the three items on the agenda. Would somebody like a mo-, make a motion to approve? Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by?
Second.
Okay, by trustee Barowski, that's a roll call.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil. Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we're going to move to other business. I'm going to ask for help on these items. So the number eight, consideration of an ordinance approving a preliminary planned unit development, major amendment for the White Oaks planned unit development. And I'm going to turn it either to Vic or Chris to give us the update.
All right, let me try to quickly summarize. This is a property that is part of the White Oaks subdivision. It has a variety of easements for drainage and the like on it, which have complicated efforts to develop. The property owner has come to the village to try to essentially relocate those easements, not to change the drainage, but to relocate the easements so as to permit a reasonable location for a home. The requirement for this, because it is changing some of the fundamentals of the original PUD, is that it has to go through the re-amendment process of the PUD. This is the first step, preliminary approval. There will need to be some additional engineering work done, and then, once that is been satisfactorily prepared and reviewed by the village engineer, it'll come back to the village's ward for final consideration. I understand that there was a request from the HOA to continue this because this is, you know, we're in one of the early innings of this thing, and it's still going to go through a few more innings before it gets final. There will be opportunities for the HOA to make additional comments and to provide its input. So if the board were to consider this tonight, it would require a motion second and roll call vote, but that would only continue the process. It would not give anybody any final development rights to go forward. That still would have to require the detailed engineering and ultimately an approval of a final PUD amendment.
So one point of clarification, too, though. So this was on the agenda like five, six weeks ago?
Yeah, I want to say three or four meetings, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a while ago. And, you know, Chris reached out to the HOA, and tried to reach out several times, right, to give them time to respond. And I think you thought that they were generally in agreement with it, and then today we got, put it on the agenda, and we got the note asking us to push it again. But it probably isn't fair at this point to do that, since a lot of time's been given. And this is, and you explained it, this is a preliminary thing. The HOA, if I understand, it still has the authority over the A or N, right?
Well, it certainly has its own regimen of regulations that will also have to be addressed in terms of the property owner. Those are private, not the village ordinances, so that's a different realm, but they still have that control. Nothing we do affects what the HOA has control.
What are the next two steps through the village after this, if we, if we've seen the?
Well, the next step is, the next step is going to really be for them to then go through the detailed engineering. That will then have.
Them, the property owner.
The property owner.
Thank you.
That will then have to go to the village engineer. Once the village engineer determines that everything meets our drainage and WDO requirements, then they can make the application for the final plat, ultimately come back to the board.
Okay. I had one weird question, just, it hurt you out. It wasn't clear. There's talk about a swale and a culvert. Is that a new culvert or an existing one?
The culvert's existing.
It's existing. And who is responsible for that maintenance, like cleaning it out and all that kind of stuff?
I believe you were talking about the one under Eleanor Drive, and that's the HOA.
That's what?
The HOA. Eleanor is a private road.
Questions?
I'll just add that the HOA wasn't objectionable to this. They just wanted to do their own engineering of it.
Okay, so the HOA was not objection, they didn't object to it?
No, they just, and they wanted to conduct their own independent engineering analysis, which would certainly fit into the timeline here.
Other questions?
Bill, I have a question. What was the public hearing, and what was the consensus out of the public hearing on this issue?
The PCDBA recommended it for approval.
Yeah, can Helen, can you, can I ask you to come up here?
Was that a public hearing or regulated?
Yeah.
Was it a public hearing, thinking that people were present in order to give their statement about the?
Thank you, Helen. Our PCDBA chair is up here giving. Answer your question.
Which will be next, which will be next. And our understanding actually is that part of the reason for this is because there will be some movement of water, changing the direction and where things are going. So they're, they're wanting to put it just, to change the easements to a corner of the property, and that's, yeah. But it is, it is dealing with the water, and what we, what we recommended was that all of the statements that our village engineer gave and concerns be incorporated into the approval. And they also would be required, which was mentioned, to obtain all the approvals from other water regulations agencies. So there is a lot of oversight on what they're attempting to do. We had many questions about it, because water goes where water wants to go. And could this happen? Jeff assured Jeff assured us that from an engineering standpoint, what they were hoping to do was theoretically possible. And so we were willing to give the initial approval. Now it's up to, a recommendation, excuse me. Now it's up to engineers and other people like that to get into the.
Make it actually happen or actually do it.
Correct.
Trustee Jamil, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, Nina.
Thanks, Helen. Yes, please do.
Nina Angelo from the State of San Jose. I just, I was afraid.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, but it was hard to get to. We did provide her information back in July after we met with Senator Bill Rantin. I'm not sure how many, I know indicated that Chris spoke with the HOA several times since then. Are you saying he's really with the organization company? I know yesterday he received an email from them. I just want to make sure communication is huge with us too, that in this timeframe, if you reached out multiple times, when that was?
No, we, I sent an email to you last week. And then we talked yesterday. And then in the meantime, I know the applicant had been trying to schedule.
But we. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm the applicant's attorney. And we actually, the team here, our civil engineer, my client, myself, with the HOA board members who could attend, and we spoke for about an hour. And then I followed up occasionally with the board to see if there was any progress. I just followed up and heard, I mean, we communicated, but there was nothing to report.
Okay, yeah, so we hired, we sent everything to our attorney on the same day. But unfortunately, not all of our owners couldn't get anything. Regardless of that, I do have a question because Perry said that this swale is a responsibility of the HOA. And that's where I'm not cleared in our generation of deputies. And that's one of the reasons we hired outside counsel to help us figure that out, considering that this would be affecting that. It's not our decision to like try to stop this. It's just we need to know what our responsibility is as an HOA. When I talked to Chris yesterday, this is preliminary, but considering you're going off the plans that were submitted, that he sent to the county, that he sent to the Army Corps, et cetera, are these the plans?
Can you come up with like some other?
Are these the plans that?
I'm going to ask about the culvert of the swale.
I thought he said, I thought Joseph said about the swale.
I am.
You asked about the culvert.
I asked about the culvert.
Yeah.
Okay.
That goes underneath the road, if that was a new one or an existing one, and whose responsibility.
Oh, okay.
And that's what he was saying, the HOA is responsible for that. Eleanor, Eleanor, yeah.
Okay. So our attorney, when we finally got in touch with her today, just wants to make sure, define what drainage is in our, because we have two conflicting provisions in our documents. And want to make sure that if any of this affects it, we're not, you know, if this preliminary approval will allow us to still do that and honor, you know, what our HOA obligations are, you know, that's fine. We're just, I just want to clarify that.
With respect to the.
If you're not going to have a conversation, just go into your office so you can focus on your phone. Okay, I'm wearing it.
What?
Okay.
Okay, somebody, get your microphone, please, yep.
With respect to the approval that's before the board tonight, that would not preclude your having an independent review, you're looking at it. If you have further comments, sharing those with the plan commission or the staff before it even comes to the village board. The next step on this, after Jeff finishes his review, will be a meeting before the plan commission, and then ordinance would be drafted. So there's multiple points at which any comments or concerns you have can be presented to the village and incorporated into this.
It sounds like if we take action on this, there still are completely parallel avenues available for the applicant interacting with Sam and the HOA.
We're not even to the middle of the fifth, so it can't be a complete game even with rain.
Gotcha.
When was this meeting, when was this in common with the?
July 16th.
Yeah, oh, thank you, July, okay.
I'm just going to ask my question. I've been waving my hand back and forth. And I got two questions. One is, with all of the rules that they will live by and done properly, does that mean that no one will get any negative impact from this change?
Well, and that's.
I'm not sure enough in the plan yet.
And that's like Vic was saying, you know, after this approval, that's the step that, you know, I'm not going to speak for them, allows them to go to the next step, which includes the final engineering and, you know, the details to do that. Because we're looking at, you know, not creating adverse impacts to the adjacent properties nor, you know, the downstream properties as well.
So are you saying if there is a negative impact anywhere along the line, it stops the process? Or people have to make a decision to stop the process? Or fix it?
So if it does come that there's potential for the negative or adverse impact, you know, that's when I will work with the applicant's design team and, you know, how do you address that? Because usually that's the kind of thing that, you know, it comes out in early on and you work through how to address that.
Okay, my second question, I meant to look it up and I didn't. When was this purchased and what they paid for it?
Is that our business?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question, so.
Is that our business?
Bobby, what's your point?
My point is, many, many times, people come in, get a distressed property that has problems. They get a bargain basement price on it and then want the village to make changes to accommodate their change. And that's why I meant to look it up and I'll do that later.
Thanks, Bobby, for that clarification. You know, my viewpoint is a little different. The petition is spending a crap load of money on this. And they're going to have to spend a crap more to get all this stormwater management approvals on this. So I think their investment in one particular parcel is going to be bigger, larger.
And I think they should be wanted for trying very hard to work with everybody to do it.
Unfortunately though, it doesn't work that way in our subdivision because we've had a home that was recently built and we're having some concerns. So we're hoping that it is going to be thoughtfully looked at, whether it's from the engineer. Again, we don't want to stop anybody from doing anything. We just don't want to, you know, pay, not be able to pay for our roads because we're paying for drainage or being told we have to pay for drainage down the line, that's all. I agree. And, yes, it is, you know, it was one of those last remaining lots. We're not sure, so.
So first off, thank you for being here too. And I met you before too, now I realize that. So it took me a second.
Oh.
Met you at Jameson.
Yes, yes.
And I was putting it all together. And I didn't have the information correct, but I was asking Chris to follow up with you before this meeting to make sure that you were aware that this was being decided. Unfortunately, the, I guess, the, you know, the objection happened right the day of the meeting, right? So I don't know where the board wants to go with this.
I don't understand why we, I understand why we wouldn't let it proceed, understanding that both the parallel paths are available.
Yeah, I mean, we just, I mean, our concern obviously is with the HOA and making sure that we don't put them in a bad spot. But if everyone, if Jeff and Vic feel like, you know, this is an early stage here, that there's no risk, then I don't know why we would stop it, but that's the question, right? So.
I don't know why we would encourage it.
Why we would encourage it? Yeah?
I, that corner floods, correct me if I'm wrong. As it is right now with no building on it, that corner floods. We know environmentally that rains are getting heavier and longer. There are, the standards, you know, we adopted the new standards, right? So if I'm reading one of these diagrams correctly, the septic is in front of the house, which.
The applicant or the attorney for the applicant's here?
That was a concept we abandoned. And the septic is on the far side of the house. We had submitted a different plan that showed the septic field far away from the drainage swale area. It's not going to be a continuous. It's going to be along the west, the septic is on the west, on the west yard.
Where the pool is?
Yes.
So these are old documents that we have?
There's a document that's been supplemented, yeah, that didn't get in your packet. But we had amended, given this to your planner and amended the, in a very conceptual site plan. All we're talking about is a modification to an existing easement, just planted.
I understand.
That's sort of generic, right? We can just, with some general civil engineering. Now we're looking to modify the building footprint so we can do a building that is sort of consistent with the neighborhood in terms of this footprint. There's just this one mod, not multiple, we're trying to modify, especially just one, that we're trying to modify to allow for engineered design. And the engineered design is going to be pursuant to a whole host of regulations, from wetland to stormwater drainage. That will have to be abided by. So with respect, I think that, you know, the professionals who are engaged in this matter at the village level and the county levels and federal level, quite a lot of components, are going to be closely reviewing this. And we're just asking for the initial step in your PUD process that will give us a confidence that we can try and engineer this fully. And we, you know, and to Jeff's point earlier, he's got to try to verify and require us to demonstrate that the drains will be consistent with Illinois law, which puts limitations on where water can go and how much it can burn or overburn to neighboring property owners, which generally they think you can't. You've got to contain it on your site. So if we have to re-engineer the site, to some extent, we get to find an engineer and realize that there is a, there's not enough capacity. I'd let the engineer speak to this, but if there's not enough capacity, we'd have to redesign the site and maintain it on our property before this all. With respect to the matter of the HOA, we're happy to talk with them. But, you know, their documentation and their understanding of their own rights and responsibilities is not really confronted in right now. It's a really separate matter. And we just ask that you allow us to move forward in this process. And we have invested a lot of time and money on this to say.
Can I finish what I was?
Yeah, please do.
Can I finish?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. The problem I have is this property in your documents is described as HOA documents, environmentally sensitive open space. There's flood plain, there's wetlands. Wetland, how deep are the wetlands? You know, I understand that the testing has to take place. I understand that there are laws. I get all of that. This piece has sat there all those years because the buildable area is very small, okay? Environmentally, engineering wise, so on and so forth. It's hard to put a 4,000, 4,500 square foot house on the pad that is available there. But these are flood plains and wetlands. How deep is it? You know, you can shove stuff through a funnel all you want and build berms to make the water go around it, what about the water under it? You know, to me, it's like you still have to plan for the future if climate change gets worse. Rainfall, whatever, whatever it's, whatever you want to call it, severe weather that we're having. So, you know, I, and this feeds into Buffalo Creek. This isn't just a little stream. It's Buffalo Creek water. So, you know, what, the plan that you say was initially, it's no longer? The septic field was on a flood plain. I'm like, you guys, you gotta be kidding me. So I'm glad that was, I mean, obviously it's going to be. And this Form E, it says on page two, you have to check the boxes of the items that are required. And there's not applicable for water, flood drains, marshes, rock outcroppings, etc. That I don't understand, but I don't know why you wouldn't, you wouldn't ask for that. Subsurface conditions on the track, location and results of tests made to ascertain subsurface soil, rock ground. It's like, that's kind of a no brainer, is it not, when you're looking at the flood plain?
So I just, to that question, all I would say is, you know, we're in the infancy stages of this. You know, there's a lot of regulations and a lot of different agencies that they're going to have to get permits through. You know, not only the village, the county for septic well, the US Army Corps of Engineers, and then also county wetland approval is going to be needed. So that would, you know, the village's approval hits the flood plain, you know, making sure that you're building outside of it. And there's flood protection requirements that they'll have to comply with for the building. As far as foundation and things like that for the house, you know, I'm assuming they're going to look into that, but they're not there yet. You know, what the soils are.
What I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not trusting our codes and our process.
I think I have an issue with, with ground that you already know it's a flood plain. You already know that there are wetlands and it's swampy. The corner floods frequently. Maybe it's because it's cleaned out. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't go down there and inspect it. It just seems to me like it's, it's, why? When you know, when you know upfront that it's, the building pad is not that great and it's, and these easements were, they were overseen by somebody when the community was developed originally. Why would, why would you give up an easement? Why would you do that? You know, it's kind of like, why would you even?
I'm still hearing the same thing. You're not trusting our codes or our process.
I, I.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
It doesn't matter.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but at the level of like, that's what the regulations and process, I think, are meant to suss out. They're grown up people. If they want to throw money at it, you know, Helen runs a pretty thorough commission, last I looked, that, you know, it's a recommendation and it's going to have a few cycles through. So I'm not disagreeing with you on, it is wetlands, but I also think that that's partly why we put this. Help me understand. You know I respect you.
Part of me, part of me says, you know, knock yourself out. You know, if you want to throw money at it, throw money at it. It's what we don't know. Okay, you know, you, you take the letter Z and you turn it into an M, and what have you gained? When all is said and not, I, you know, I guess part of it is, part of it is when people come in and they present thoughts and ideas and whatevers. You don't want to lead them down a garden path. No, if it's not going to work, it's probably not going to work. I'm not an engineer. It's just when you have a problem property to begin with, I see it a lot. It rarely gets better because you can't, you can't change what it is. You know, we had somebody in here just a couple of weeks ago and that was problematic, so.
Hey, so there's two, there's two other, Helen, you wanted to make a statement or something?
I just wanted to say that in terms of the septic field, that change was made prior to their meeting with the plan commission. So in terms of the documentation, we had documentation with the moved septic field. This PUD always envisioned a home on that property. It's just where they were going to put it. They're seeking to put it in a slightly different place. And to do that, they need to deal with water. And now the question is, and this was our issue, because water is water. Our issue is, do all the government agencies have enough rules in place that when this is finished, they will have a safe home to reside in? Our village engineer assured us that all of this was possible. And therefore, it seems reasonable to allow a landowner to go forward. Whether or not the engineers all end up coming back with the same information is yet to be actually determined. But our village engineer has said it's possible.
The applicant's attorney had another comment?
I just, very briefly, I think one thing to keep in perspective is, this whole community was master planned. And there was a level of engineering, a level of. And there was a level of engineering and a level of understanding of conditions at the time of its master plan. So they laid out lots, they laid out billable areas, and they impressed certain areas that were known and anticipated to be floodplain water and scenic corridor, wind protected woodlands, et cetera. But they hadn't done detailed final engineering. So sometimes in communities like this, there can be recognition that what was laid out in sort of a almost blank fashion might not conform to specific conditions that develop over four years. This has been an undeveloped block for a long time. It receives water from north on the other side of the road, and it conveys through, and it receives water from west going out east. Parts of the conditions are some lack of maintenance on the color, right? That's causing some water to back up. So we, our wetland consultant, I think, some of the wetlands were created after the fact of the platted. So existing conditions, that existed forty years ago, was platted, changed over time to what we have now, which is also part of what we're trying to deal with. Now we have to deal with the existence of wetlands that may not have been there when it was first laid out, where they were deciding what were the easement areas for drainage, et cetera. So that's kind of what brings us to this, allowing the, to master. What we regard as a modest amount of relief, not eliminating an entire easement area cutting off, it's just carving out a little corner of it so that we can just modify and relocate it. It could have been that that was originally designed that way. It wasn't, it was just a flat plain, but there's a way of designing it to convey the water, not to want to remove it and nobody have permits for it.
Christine.
From what I understand, there's a berm that's going to make the water go, go around that corner?
It's depressing.
Exaggerate?
It's depressing, so they're going to, they're going to change, oh.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a depression, you know? It's not like a berm where they're building it up to make it that way.
Got it, okay. Can we, when we get our information here and something is updated, could we get them to that?
Yeah.
Might help.
See Helen, you had more, better information than we had. Maybe you could have told us, but I guess we gave it to you. But, um. There you go. Christine, do you want to say something else?
I, yeah. Yes, it was probably a result, the homes all up the street were built within the last twenty to twenty-five years, my home being one of them. And yes, when you do, regardless of, we ran, you know, a bunch of water, but you do hit water. It depends on how deep you go or, you know, the size of your home, so that does factor in. Now, did our homes being built contribute to that, or higher up possibly? Was that home, was that lot, it wasn't for sale all this time? It just went for sale two years ago during COVID. For whatever reason, the developer who owned the lot, who owned the lot all this time, the developer's family, they decided to sell it. My husband, who would have loved the lot because he would have loved to build a house for our kids in the future, would have bought it if it was something he thought. We all thought it was infillable, so, you know, in terms of having that kind of condition, yes, it's a beautiful lot. Hopefully, you know, we can figure this out. But in terms of where the water's going to go, which I think when we were at the zoning meeting was the biggest question, that's our question too. So, you know, they thought it, with the condition that it was, so.
Sounds like it's not going to be easily buildable, but somebody is interested in trying.
Well, and then we're interested in not making the HOA, it costs us more money as a result of like changes that were made. That's not, that's not, you know, what we're interested in. So just because, you know, I mean, we want, you know, yeah, to move forward, but we don't want to have to. Thank you.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we approve this and move this over.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer. Give her a second.
Yeah, I'll say that. Any comments from anybody on the public side?
Bobby asked, Jamil asked a question too, so. Okay, so we have a live motion, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, second by trustee Varoski. Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Varoski?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly? I could, we can't, you're muted, Bobby?
No.
Okay. Name? Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Um, so just next to give Chris assurances, we'll be, how's this going to work now? So that they're comfortable.
Yeah, can we help facilitate communication?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm most worried about, you know, the HOA. Getting in a bad spot.
Can we help facilitate communication?
Yeah. Yeah, so we can, we'll talk. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thanks for being here too, by the way. Okay, we have another item that, it's the village planning and zoning update. And I don't know, Chris, are you going to?
Karen, you're here tonight, but I think somebody's going to kick it off. Yeah, so we had a public hearing last week for the PCTBA for Deer Trail. I don't know if Vic wants to give the history on this, because it goes back quite a ways.
Sure. This is a property that came into the village in 2017 pursuant to an annexation agreement. Some of you were on the board at the time.
Oh, my God, it was the first budget stop. I get this on paper.
Yeah, it was a heavily papered development. It was being brought to the village more coincidentally than anything else with another property immediately to the south known as Karen Corners. Both of them went forward with the PUD approvals, both residential, different, different fields to the two neighborhoods. And they were, there was a lot of conversation at the plan commission level and at the board level about the different aspects of it. When this one came in, it was by annexation agreement, and there was also an amendment to the zoning code that was allowing these lots at roughly, smallest size, I believe, is sixteen thousand square feet, to be platted so long as the overall density within the subdivision was, I think it ends up at 1.1 acre per unit. And so the notion was to have the lots and the, and the homes clustered, but have it surrounded by a lot of open space. There are paths on each side of the development that are platted, and there were a number of things that were incorporated into the approvals that would have it integrate with the Karen's Corners in terms of the pathways and a park that is to be developed as part of Karen's Corners. Karen's Corner was also approved. It had all those complimentary items. Ultimately, both of them were approved through final PUDs, and neither of them went forward. And so, because of the annexation agreement, this one has binding zoning, but subdivision provisions of it have left. Because under our subdivision ordinance, certain things have to be done within certain periods of time, and they didn't. So the, because it's a PUD and it's zoning and subdivision, we're going through the process again. We need to make sure that it is procedurally correct and to freshen it up in terms of the development itself. In doing this, we have a new owner. The new owner has some concepts that, that they have presented, and those were the things that were, I think it's fair to say, the, the focus of the plan commission's review of this earlier. I don't know if it's this month or last month. I know. So, yeah, I guess it was last, last week, so this, earlier this month. It did get recommendations from the plan commission. There will be a need to make some minor technical amendments to the annexation agreement. So there has been a notice published for an amendment to the annexation agreement, which is scheduled for two weeks from tonight. And at that time, the expectation is that you will have that public hearing, and then there will be ordinances available for your consideration regarding the approvals. And this will be both final and, preliminary and final, based on what the plan commission recommended and subject to whatever comments and direction we get from the all-time.
We have to, we're, we're running it through these processes again because A, time has left.
Right.
B, because it's an annexation.
Well, the annexation agreement guaranteed them the zoning.
Right.
But, again, our subdivision ordinance says that after you get it approved, you have a certain period of time to make the improvements. None of that happened, so they are technically left. And we have just said, oh, go ahead.
We're in a shoot and let, you have to.
Yeah, you know, you know, I mean, and if we weren't concerned about procedural propriety, we would have just, ah, go ahead. Sadly, I'm your attorney and I'm not a guy who is, ah, go ahead. And so, I, I was kind of the stickler here saying, no, you can't simply just move forward here. There is a, a time lapse here that we need to address, and that's why we're going through this.
So we have to go back and pick all those zones again because of the.
Except, because we've already gone through the process and we've already reached an agreement on this, we have a fairly constrained degree of discretion, and it really comes into play with the matters that they have asked to, to be modified.
Can I ask another question though too? So the architecture of these homes, the village board has a say in that, right?
Uh, the architecture has not been approved. It wasn't approved originally. I know that the current owner, I think before they closed on the property, did go before the architectural commission and presented some concepts.
Excuse me, but they did go before the architectural committee. The architectural committee has already made recommendations.
Right.
On the homes and things like the garages and stuff.
Right, no, that's what I said. They did, they did go before them.
All right.
And they made some recommendations. Technically, it was at a time when they didn't have the approval. So the, the ordinances, consistent with how we first approved it, will say that they're still subject to architectural review, still subject to our antimonotony provisions, et cetera. And I know that they have some concepts that, that they're, that they're contemplating, and that the ARC has, as Helen mentioned, given them the, the, more or less the thumbs up. But that doesn't mean that the village board is any way foreclosed, because as you know, the village board has the ability to review that. I would say again, and, you know, I'm sorry that I'm sort of the sick in the mud here. The ARC's review, because it was before the zoning came into play.
They got to look at it again.
Technically, I have to go back.
Or they have to at least, let's say, stamp it again.
Yeah, they have to stamp it again, because what that does, you know, again, through the procedures we have, is that that stamp then offers the village board an opportunity to look at what the ARC has approved.
That's it.
Okay?
Well, and, and part of the reason why this is on the agenda tonight is that we went through three village managers in a short period of time, and the architectural review started, the first one happened in November, and then there was another one in what, April or something?
March, March.
March, March, right. So none of us really got a readout from those meetings in a board meeting, and we should, right? So we're kind of getting, we're kind of catching up tonight on that whole thing?
Is this, is this an informational discussion?
Yes.
Tonight's informational, in part, and, you know, I did fill in Chris on some of the history. I mean, I can't remember when it changed, but I know that probably up until the time of COVID, we had traditionally have plan commission meeting, report to the board.
Yep.
With direction to prepare the ordinances so that the board had some preliminary opportunity to offer feedback.
Yeah.
And our ordinances that we drafted for your consideration had the benefit of that feedback. I think it was right around COVID, although I may be wrong about the timing, somehow that all got compressed. And it had started to go plan commission, village board. And so while we were drafting documents based on plan commission's recommendation, it often resulted in either a lot of on-the-fly changes at board meetings or, or other reviews that, that may not have gotten fully vetted by the board first. So I, I think that in terms of process, there is a benefit to having it plan commission, plan commission report before the board, then board consideration. In this instance, it had to be that way because of the annexation agreement hearing.
But, but even the architectural meetings, there should be a readout after that at the next board meeting on what happened. So we all know what happened.
I bet it went to the side when Jim Hoag retired.
It, it might have been the time, you know, again, it all kind of happened at the same time.
Subcontract.
Dave left, COVID happened, Jim left, and, you know.
Well, then everything else, right? Yeah.
Karen has the, has the report on what happened with that meeting, because that was part of our concern to, to us. For example, they, I believe she said a marching meeting, they, they gave an approval for seven front-loading garages. They gave an approval for various layouts of the, of the homes. And in terms of how that impacted what we were doing, it didn't really impact us. What we were looking at was primarily, on this thirty-six acres, can they put, thirty-eight acres? Thirty-eight acres, can they put twenty-six houses? And that's what the annexation agreement has already implemented and reported.
Sounds like we've done a lot of good conversation just in the sequence that we now need to kind of go and repeat and just for document, appropriate documentation purposes. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, we just had our meeting last week, so they were then going to come before you, which is what we were trying to make sure happened with somebody who was there. And my understanding was that was going to be at, at your meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, but are we ready for that without having the architectural piece in place, right?
Well, they.
They met.
Again, the approve, the approvals that we had last time, which I anticipate will be largely replicated for your consideration in a couple of weeks, still have that the ARC has to look at it once the approval is in place. That's.
Oh, so in other words, we have to approve the, reapprove the PUD?
We have to reapprove it so that there is something for the ARC to consider.
Ah, I see.
The ARC, the ARC's review was really something that the developer asked in order to, you know, sort of get a pulse of, you know, is this going to fly? And I think the ARC suggested that, yes, it would fly, but it wasn't at a time when the ARC had any technical jurisdiction over it. Now that the, you know, once this is reapproved, assuming that that's the outcome, then the ARC will have to go back through it again. It may be a very quick meeting, but they still need to go through that step.
Then we'll present it to you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Other, trustee Jamil, trustee O'Reilly, comments, questions? Seen a no from trustee Jamil?
No.
Not at the point? What'd you say, Dr. Jamil?
No questions, well.
No questions, okay. Rita?
I read this afternoon, and there seemed to be a discrepancy between wells and public water in, in, in the, I can't remember if it was in.
Well, if I recall correctly, way back then, we were trying to get them to potentially put a community well, right? And in the end.
They were going to hook up.
I thought we had, I know we were having, having them speak with Menards.
Well, Menards has a deep, deep well, so.
No, there was a sanitary sewer that went from Menards. Menards, right? So, and then there's, you know, that's a whole nother Karen's Corners was going to bring that down to Deer Trail. But the wells, there was a big discussion about is the aquifer.
Yes.
You know, to, the wrong, wrong kind of water, they needed to get deeper wells in there to get proper water. And that's still an open item too, right? Jeff?
One of the recommendations of the PCTBA was to confirm the location of the proposed individual wells with a study of the impacts of them on the aquifer.
Yeah, that's in here, but, but it's a discrepancy because, and I can't remember if it was the ordinance or the annexation agreement, but one said water hookups and the other said wells. And water hookup was not the term used in the plan, that's my terminology. But it's like, well, wait a minute. And I, I remembered that we talked about that.
Yep.
Because getting water and sewer as opposed to well and septic, because. because the properties are so close together.
Right.
You know, there's, there are a bunch of things, we don't have covenants. There's a bunch of things in here that the developer was, was obligated to get to us, and several of them are upon village approval, and we never got any of it. So, it's kind of loosey-goosey. You know, there's landscaping issues in here, I don't even know if these people know about it. Maybe they've read the same documents I've read. I would hope that they have, could probably have. Um, I mean, they bought the, they bought the property, they own it now regardless. But, um, Swanson didn't do much follow-up.
Yep.
And, and they are gonna basically be picking up where Swanson left off. So they have a boatload of work to do, uh, once the approvals are in place. The same ones, they'll have to develop covenants, they'll have to, uh, do the final engineering, or I guess final engineering is on, but they're gonna have to, um, uh, go through the ARC. They're gonna have to make sure they're getting all the permitting, the whole nine yards.
And it was presented, it was well, it was presented.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's actually what the documents, the, the approval documents indicated.
So where did, where did the water hookups come in?
I, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, but the documents do say individual lot.
I, I do remember agreeing to that in the end.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I do remember that.
It might have been in the preliminary approvals, but it was not in the final.
We spent, we spent hours and hours and hours on this one.
Months. Mostly because we were trying to keep line in the two.
Yeah.
Now, we're back to just the single one.
And the park.
We're trying to make that, there.
Yeah, the park.
Yeah, there was a, we're trying to make them.
That new road change.
Yeah.
Um, there was, uh, landscaping requirements.
Mm-hmm.
And there are rules, there are rules in here that the houses that border the road look better. My, my interpretation, uh, landscaping-wise.
Yeah.
And they, they're wider and they're, you know, they're more attractive than the guys stuck in between. I, I read this and it's like, God, how did we do this?
Yep, we did.
Well, it made, it, it made sense at the time to, I think what, it's sort of a poor man's version of, um, the fields, you know, not as much land, but, but to group. A- and there's, there's a theory, development theory out there that if, if you cluster the houses, it leaves more open space for recreation, for wetlands and so on and so forth. It's a theory, you know, I don't know, but, but when I looked at their, um, elevations, it's like, you know.
Yeah, the houses, uh, weren't exciting looking.
No.
So that was my, my concern, that's just, you know.
You know.
They didn't excite me, so.
And they've built some communities very close by that, um.
But again, so we have that opportunity, right, to look at the architecture.
Part of the issue is, we don't have, um, floor area ratios. When it, if, if you have a lot this big, can't build a house this big. We don't have that. Chicago does, um, and that may be something we want to consider, because to me, you know, one of the things they're charged with is, when it's a special use, is maintaining the character of the surrounding. Everything around it is spacious and two or three acres, one to three acres, whatever. And trend today is put, you know, 20 pounds of sugar in a 10-pound bag.
We do have the amount of permeable, uh, proper.
Surface.
Wood surfaces on there. So, in, in my mind, it's a, it's a, I mean, apples and oranges, but it's still, it's a cool thing. Uh, because if you're, if you're limiting the amount of permeable, uh.
Yeah.
Building out, then you're.
Correct.
Making sure that there's enough space around it.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, you end up with narrow streets and kind of, you know, you're like this when you're. And that's what the developer has done in this area.
Are there any other questions?
I, I have one question, and, and I don't recall reading anything about it. Is there going to be any kind of protection in the back to the, the, um, the areas that are going to buffer the, um, guy, well, no, it's not Gaimer property, um, the old Gaimer property?
That, that, the, the west side of this is all open. Yes, the, the west side is all open space.
Will it remain in perpetuity to be open?
Right, that, that's covenant, that'll be covenanted on the flat and governed by the CCNRs.
I think the one part, what interesting thing is, is that's a part that's adjacent to the old, um, Karen's Corner, and then Mike, what's his face, told part of that.
Yeah, the Karen Corner one is a li, got a little bit weird because there's an IDOT squatch that cut off. You know, they had a phase two, and the phase two was sort of a cluster down here, and a big chunk of that, there's, I think, still two or three lots that are lying west of what IDOT bought.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know how they're ever gonna do it, um, unless they get it back. Interestingly, um, and it's recorded, uh, in the annexation agreement for Karen's Corner, there were easements, uh, granted to the village, and the village accepted those easements, uh, for pathways before IDOT purchased the land. So, IDOT took it subject to village interests on various pathways, and they have not been extinguished. So we, we do, even though IDOT owns the fee, we have paths over them that IDOT has no ability right now to eliminate.
That's part of our pathway plan.
You know, speaking of pathways, I, I don't think that, um, should necessarily agree to them. In, in the, the agreement we have now is the pathways are done before occupancy on the first house. And the, the reason I say this is, and, and we intentionally made those eight feet, not six feet, so as far as I'm concerned, it's eight feet.
I agree.
But, but more importantly, with, with the pathway setup, you run into the thing of new owners saying, well, I didn't know that was gonna be there. I don't want people in my backyard. You know, kind of like your reaction to, you know, people parking and walking through your side. I mean, that's how.
Some of those pathways are only about five to six feet from a few of the houses. So think about that. Do you want somebody walking by your house six feet away?
Hey, I di, you know what, I didn't build it.
I know, I know. That's the, that's the point of that remark.
I didn't approve it, but, but, but what I'm saying is, you know, um, they say it's weather-related, and while I can appreciate that, it's like, no, that was in there for a reason.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, too. I don't know why you'd give it, give it on those items, but.
Well, they say it's a weather issue, because they can't, they can't necessarily get them in before winter, and they would like to be selling houses and closing houses, you know, so.
It's kind of interesting watching the one in Buffalo Grove, that link across there, because they managed to get, they, they actually managed to put a lot of all of their outside landscaping in even before finishing all the lots.
So let me, um, do we have any other questions? Because I, um, we've got a few more items that's going on nine o'clock. Can we stop here?
Good for me.
Well, it's not going on nine o'clock.
It's 8:19.
We'll get there, don't worry.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, I'm like, oh, no, the hands, I got the hand, no. I'm running the menu.
Like, you still have an early flight, and I'm.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm making that up, it's only 8:19, never mind. I tried.
After nine in New York.
So if now, can we stop here? Are we good?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Well, well then, we will plan to have, uh, ordinances for your consideration on the 27th.
Okay.
So, so we cannot backtrack on any of this?
Well, um, I, I would say that, I would say that we, we, uh, have some challenges if we were to try to backtrack from it, yes.
What about traffic? You know, we, we thought that the way they fixed Old 53 was going to be a good cure.
Well, that's one of the things that, that, uh, Jeff is looking at from an engineering perspective. The, you know, again, the annexation agreement has some changes that are gonna be necessary, and there are some changes that they're asking for. So we're looking at what, if anything, needs to change from that. And, you know, I, I understand that, uh, some of the improvements have been completed by IDOT, and that may be viewed as enough, and I guess that's something that I'm gonna defer to Mr. Perry, and I don't know that, uh, he's been able to complete his analysis on it.
We had traffic studies when this came up, didn't we?
KLA.
Well, um, I went through the files and, uh, two things. One, there was a memorandum by KLA, their traffic engineer.
Yeah, 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 right, yeah.
For their original thing. I would say it was a memorandum, it was not a full-blown traffic study, because, and I don't remember exactly or who made the decision when in America, but the village code says it's only required if you're 100 lots or more. So, they did have that traffic study, um, took a look at it. Is it gonna, you know, have they updated it, you know, their memorandum? No. Um, is it gonna substantially change? Probably not.
But it wasn't a study.
Yeah, well, it was a memorandum, you know, a study takes into account a lot more things. But they did go through and they projected traffic volumes. And they had, you know, about 250 trips per day going on Old Hicks. So, that's probably the same number. Um, and that's as published by, they used the publication from the Institute of Transportation Engineers to get that number.
50 to 70 more cars on Checker and Old Hicks. How many ti, 250 times a day?
250 trips, so, and that's one car going one way. So, if they go and come back, that counts two trips.
Well, there and then go and stay away.
Hey, you never know.
It, it, again, though, it's gonna gum up the use of the corridor land because of the traffic we're putting. Checker already stinks, Old Hicks stinks. It, it's gridlocked for those people, no matter which way they come or go, because of the cut-throughs. Now we're adding, we're adding this. And there's no, there's no easy solution. You can't put another traffic light up there, then you have a traffic light within blocks of each other.
If, if we're done, could I make one comment? And, and that's about the job that Karen's doing. Um, I, I think that the two reports that she provided today are just spectacular, and, and I feel as if we're really being served well.
Well, thank you, Bobby, for that, Karen. That, that was a nice compliment, so.
Thank you, thank you. That's really good to hear, and, uh, I'm, I'm willing to listen to any suggestions that you have for, for even better reports, but I appreciate hearing that.
Well, these, these were really good. Thank you.
Material which I asked for did not receive.
There you go. Again, your material was better than ours, so.
Well, I still was presenting here and what people are talking they've done is important.
Yes, it would have helped us if you would have been able to tell us that, so thank you.
What, what are you saying?
The septic tank, there's, yours was.
For your discussion.
Yeah, we're all good. In other words, they had more current information than we in the open. Yeah, yeah, so.
The public doesn't, you know.
The public, we're going back to the public comment that.
You have, you received two reports, which she's referencing, and I'm saying I didn't receive either of those.
Or you had, already had them, but yeah.
Which report?
In other words, in the board packet, the, this, the information we had in the board packet was not publicly facing.
Sorry.
Regarding.
Which part?
Nothing, all that's in the agenda, board packet, right? All this publicly facing right now is an agenda, is what we were talking about at the beginning of the meeting. There's been no other material from the last three meetings provided.
Karen, Karen, the village planner, has two reports, one for the early court, one for the, in the board packet.
The stuff that you have in the board packet, Karen wrote.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Never mind. Okay, let's keep us moving. Can we move on to the, um, village engineer's report?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Plus. Village engineer's report, uh, highlights here. First of all, the little tall expansion is, uh, ongoing. We've got a meeting tomorrow with, uh, the contractor and the architect to, uh, get a, uh, update on the schedule, so more to come off of that. They did some foundation surveys today, so that's the, once that's approved by our office, they can start their above-ground framing and construction. So, um, we can get a updated schedule tomorrow. Uh, the road maintenance pro, program, Mother Nature cooperating, will see some asphalt, uh, this week, um, on Sumter and, uh, Lakewood, um, and State Lane and some of the roads up there. So, um, like I said, it's planned for Thursday, but there's rain in the forecast, so we want to make sure that that's done correctly and within specifications. Um, along with the road program, not in the update, but the Reclamite, uh, that is going to be installed, uh, tomorrow. Uh, Reclamite is gonna be installed on the roads that were resurfaced last year and in 2022. That's North Rooker, Over Road Drive, Over Road Circle, and Chickamuga Lane. I've heard it referred to as Kalabanga, too, so.
Chickamuga.
So, um, the, uh, Reclamite's also, uh, scheduled to be installed in a simple parking lot, but with the notice that we got from Corrective Asphalt Materials, which was not very much, we want to, uh, make sure that the proper notice is given to, uh, both the village and, you know, the surrounding property owners. There is the portion that's privately owned where that happens, because that will be disruptive to a degree with the parking operations there. Uh, moving down, just real, real quickly, Arlington Heights Road, construction's ongoing there. They've got, uh, some storm sewer going in there, and, um, immediate, uh, removal, temporary pavement, a lot of traffic impacts.
Yes.
Yes. Stay away.
Can I backtrack you for a second? I have not had permission, but we're gonna step on item three, pathway study.
So the pathway study has, uh, yeah, Rita and I, a few months ago, actually completed our review of the paths that are downtown, or not downtown, but throughout the community. Um, so we've got that map, and the next step is to have a meeting with the stakeholders on what they would like to have in the plan, which, you know, stakeholders, you know, pathway committee, and then others, but we need to have that discussion, but that is the next step.
So we're, Jeff?
Correct.
Thank you. And number six, the IDOT providing, that's for the bigger landing pad?
Yeah, the bigger landing pad, IDOT is, uh, according to them, understaffed, so that's, it's languishing. Good?
Thank you.
I have a question on.
Yeah.
Five B, the national funding for Lake Michigan. Says it may not be finalized until third, now about halfway through the third quarter. Any other?
So we're working with, uh, the congressman's office on that. The first step is to submit to them a, a work plan. So we've got that plan into them. They need to review that and figure out if this needs to go through this avenue or that avenue. And it looks like that avenue, which is a lot easier, but we need to go through that process. Um, so that is moving forward, but take some time with, uh, federal funding as well.
But we're waiting on them, not up?
Correct.
Do we believe it before the election? The indoor construction change?
That's our goal.
Trustee O'Reilly had a question, too.
Uh, Jeff, the people up here would like to know when, um, if you have any indication when Indian Creek is gonna be done.
As far as the culvert? Bobby, you're talking about the culvert?
Well, yeah.
And the road closure? Okay, just some, I just wanted to clarify and make sure. Uh, the culvert replacement by the village of Hawthorne Woods was delayed because of contract, um, execution by, between the village and their contractor, and then there was also some, um, um, acquisition that needed to be completed.
Yeah, some private property agreements.
Oh, wow, so it could go to next year. Oh, wow. So it could go to next year easily.
Probably, probably a month.
Yeah, so, yeah. So the last we heard from Hawthorne Woods is it would start with, you know, in a month-ish time period. But more to come as more details get to become known on that one.
Well, there are a lot of anxious people up here in the way, in the way north that really care about that road.
Yeah. So as we get more information, we'll be sure to pass it on.
Okay.
Jeff, what else?
Hey, so just real quick, Apptekisik Road, they're moving right along with that project. Helen did ask me about the path on the north side of the road that they're working on. That's going to be a 10-foot wide bike path, multi-use path, actually. And it will be asphalt. It's only gravel now, but it will be asphalt.
And that's a, is your completion?
Correct.
Ten feet, that's not.
Yeah, yeah. So Apptekisik is going to be well-served. It's got a 10-foot path on the north side and a six-foot sidewalk on the south side.
Cool.
Ten and eleven, these are the Route 22 projects. Interestingly enough, I saw that IDOT released their multi-year plan for 2025 to 2030. Previously, they had 2024 to 2029.
Sixteen.
And bolters are being kicked. Number 11, this is the intersection improvements of 22 and 83. I can report that IDOT is nearing the end of their Phase One, which is their feasibility study. They're currently soliciting engineers for their Phase Two, their detailed engineering. So that one is moving along. Jumping down, number 14A, that's the culvert that we just addressed. 14B, this is the tabulation of private roads in the village. Village manager and myself are working on tabulating that list and assigning some preliminary costs. And then I believe the next step will just be a discussion to kind of workshop and discuss, brainstorm some of the intricacies that'll go along with that. Other than that, there's various permit updates. If there's any questions, go through them.
Anybody have anything? Okay.
And a report?
I have no report tonight. Trustee Broowski, do you have a report?
I don't have a report. I just had a comment, maybe, it should have been maybe a public comment more than anything else. But some of you may have received an email from incident regarding the water bucket challenge. I don't think I've received.
I just got it today. Yeah.
So, you know, my cardiologist doesn't really want me to do that, but it sparked the thought process.
You can use confetti.
Oh, okay, that's fair. I like that. But it started, it like brought the, just started this thought process. You know, we do a lot of festivals. And some of the events in downtown Long Grove are hooked to charities of some sort. Does it make sense for us to think about next year's event schedule and work with the business owners downtown to maybe link some charities to some of these events? Like, what would be wrong with us doing the challenge on the same event? That'd be kind of interesting. But what if we, you know, maybe partitioned off 25 cents of each entry ticket and picked a charity for each event and, you know, had the charity participate, set the table up, use their mailing list to get the event publicized a little bit more, you know, that kind of thing. So I know we do a little bit, but, and I know it's not our charter to be a charity, right? We're trusted with even money, right? But for an event like that or some kind of event like that, does it make sense for us to maybe put a different set of glasses onto next year's festivals as we move forward? That's it, that's my only question.
I would, I would up there. I don't know if we can because they're not, we don't put them on. I have had conversations, as they have had, they have a different rate for charities. And I challenged, I challenged them. I said, look, no charity really can afford that. I said, you know, can we do something? So, I mean, I have had conversations to get scouts out there twice. Once was in exchange, they were out in the kids' area. And the other barter was make sure the scouts provide additional games for the kids. So there was a bit of a, like, okay, this is a value to that. The second time, you know, they found out that company that does it, she's like, well, we can't put them out there with their not paying. So my point is, there may be different approaches to, I think, skin the cat you're seeking to address.
Yeah, I don't know if that makes sense or not. I just want to throw it out there as food for thought kind of thing, move into next year, whether or not we'll do something.
Thanks, Chris, for that.
Thank you.
We could do the community development project, something like that. You know, and charity starts at home. You know, we had a rotating group of people who, one Saturday a month, with the exception of January, February, and March, would take on local projects. People who are retired in their homes and they need help, you know, pulling weeds, trimming bushes, cleaning out whatever. If we had five or six people on, you know, for three hours on a Saturday morning, and people, people could petition, people on the list. There are certain things you would do, certain things you wouldn't do. But that might be something that we'd go hand in glove with, with the IDOT looking to.
Okay, trustee Jamil.
Who did what?
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
No.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee O'Reilly?
Just a reminder to everybody that I had asked at last meeting for any information about groups I may not know about. And I did not get a wealth of suggestions and would ask you to rethink it.
I don't know what you don't know.
Try me.
Poetic.
If you can think of an organization, suggest it to me. If I know it, it's a repeat. If I don't know it, it's new.
I'd like to, I'd like to figure out if we can resurrect a partnership with some of the marketing or other classes at Stevenson.
I didn't hear the end of that.
I said I'd like to promote that we reinstate the partnership with marketing or other classes at Stevenson again. I think that was a win-win on both sides.
I think that's a great idea.
Trustee O'Reilly, anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Tanucci?
Yes, I have an update on the TESL treatment program. The second and final set of TESL treatments took place between July 16th and July 22nd. I have a list of all the roads. If anybody's interested, let me know. The total cost of the program came in at $14,086. It compares with our approval amount of $17,434. As you recall, we approved up to that amount, $17,434, with the understanding we would be billed for the actual amount, which in this case was $14,000. So it came about $3,300 under our, and Chris, I just sent you the invoice for the second payment.
Hang on top of that.
Anything else?
At what point are we going to discuss, decide that we're going to do more than TESL? That we're gonna wait for budget or?
I have to look it up. So I know we discussed trying in the future to do the TESL program, not as a park district grant, but as just something that we do as a village. As part of those discussions, we can include, all right, what else do we want to look at? When does that take place? Well, before next spring, for sure.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, is that time passes quickly. And we should plan on it.
The park district is also kindly doing some of the oversight and project management.
Right. Yeah, we never, it's just one of the items on the list. Yep.
Well, you know, we may want to just give them the money.
Oh, meaning let them do more than they're doing, I see what you're saying.
Yes, yes. But we need to talk about it and decide.
Yeah, and I know, Chris, you did some work, right, with?
Not a lot. It's prelim, very preliminary.
Okay.
Very preliminary.
There's been a couple of Brian Stoff conversations in that one meeting, so that's all. But nothing to report?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
So put it on somebody's calendar.
I'll look it down.
Okay, it's on your calendar, Chris. Okay.
I'll add it down.
All right, thanks, Bobby. Village Manager's report?
Nothing.
Okay, Vic has suggested.
An executive session on threatened and deadly litigation. It'll be really short. We need a motion section.
Okay, moved by trustee Broowski on executive session and, who else? Oh, Tanucci, seconded by trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
Broowski.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Present.
Aye, aye. Ironay, yes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Okay, we stand by. We're gonna move to executive session shortly.
Thanks for hopping on, Karen. You can, you can get out of here now. Talk to you tomorrow.
Can't hear it. Good night. Dana, you're gonna drop that camera off, yeah.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff.
All right, let me, video. video.